Well, welcome. Let's begin. We're at 7:00. Welcome to the Kaysville Planning Commission meeting for September 12th. This is -- hold it closer, so I have to swallow the mic. Okay. This is a shakedown cruise for us, our first meeting here, so we'll see how everything works. And I already know that I don't have a gavel, so if I have to make any rulings or unruliness, then I'll just pound my fist on the table, we'll see if that works. But otherwise, I think we'll probably be fine. So Commissioners, just be aware that we're -- so we've got two mics that will pass around. We need to use the mics, right? Because that's the way you're going to be able to record this. So make sure you have a mic if you're going to make any comments. And then also with the comments from the public. We'll see how that works in this place. Lyle, how long do we think we'll be here, holding meetings?
I'll give mine a test. So with the current renovation work and remodel on the municipal building, at least through the end of June 2020, we'll likely be here using this room for our planning commission meetings.
For until?
For about nine months.
Nine months. Okay. All right. Should be fun. First item of business that we have is the approval of the minutes from the August 22nd meeting. Have the Commissioners had a chance to look over those minutes? And is anyone prepared to make a motion? Or are there any additions or corrections? Motion to approve? Is there a second? Second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you. Going now to our first item of business, which is the final plat approval for the Whisper Hollow subdivision at 650 East 100 North. This -- so I don't know if any of us -- were any of the Commissioners here for the original? You were here? Okay. So there have been some issues that have happened with this over time, and so we have been directed, and I have at this point, a procedure that we will follow as we go through this, which is just a little bit different from what we normally do, but not a lot different. So as we normally do, we'll begin this item with the briefing from the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And don't hesitate if you can't hear anything, to please let me know. We'll try and make this as loud as possible. So the property that we're reviewing under this is at the far east end of 100 North Street. And this is something that about a year and a half ago, or more, went through the Planning Commission and City Council for review. And there were some concerns from neighboring property owners regarding the decision and the proposal at the time. And so after the city completed its process, it's been under litigation and review, and is now back before the Planning Commission for reconsideration of the final plat. And so what was -- That's -- well, let's see if any of the mics are better. This one's louder, still echoey. So we were back after several -- some time when this was originally presented to the Planning Commission. So I will give a rerun, I guess, of the basics behind the subdivision. And just looking at faces, I apologize. Make sure everybody can hear. Still too echoey? What?
I think we understand. Maybe turn and talk to them, so they can hear you.
Okay. That's all right. We'll try it. I still have to speak in the mic for it to be recorded, but hopefully my voice will project to you guys, okay? So this worked for everybody? Maybe I'll give it twice. Thanks for bearing with us. All right, we're in just a new space and figuring things out with our acoustics. So the property that we're looking at, originally when it came before the city, again, for the preliminary review, which has already been approved, included five lots at the end of a private street, a cul-de-sac-type subdivision. The applicant has returned with the final plat that's similar. It's got a few changes from the preliminary plat. And essentially what it accommodates, and under the existing zoning designation, are the five lots at the end of 100 North Street on the cul-de-sac. It also includes an extra lot that's 36 feet in width, it's identified as parcel one. And what the purpose of that is, is to provide access for a couple lots, both access, but also utility access for the potential future development of that property. You can see here a little bit better some of the details of the proposed subdivision on the screen, where you have the private street that leads to a cul-de-sac, some lots that wrap around it, each that meet the minimum lot size and frontage requirements. There are some detention design basins for some of the stormwater concerns that have been previously addressed. You see some retaining wall on the east side of the private street, and some fencing, and some landscaping, as the developers propose in response to address some of the privacy concerns. We've been looking at this, I forget the exact timeframe, but most recently, again, to make sure it checks our boxes for what the city requires for a final plat approval. Our engineering review and such has found that everything complies with what we would expect from a subdivision. You'll find within the staff report several findings, facts, a conclusion of law that essentially rests the basis of staff's recommendation that we feel we're ready to approve the proposed subdivision. We are looking tonight to give an opportunity to the neighboring property owners and residents, ensure that they get the opportunity to share comments or concerns on the subdivision, get the chance to be heard. I believe the development team is here as well, that they can share comments, and hopefully we can all together answer questions for the Planning Commission. That's brief, but do I need to repeat it to this side, if you could hear it? So yeah, with that, again, the recommendation from staff is for approval of the final plat. Just remind the Chair on this, we would be looking to, again, it's a notice as a public hearing, to give the public that opportunity. We're happy as staff to run a timer, to make sure everyone gets fair and equal time sharing their concerns and comments. So let me know how much time you'd like to offer those individuals. And after you've heard from the public, the developer would then have their opportunity to speak, and then it would be your turn as a Planning Commission to deliberate on the item.
Thanks, Lyle. So our next item procedure on this will be to hear from the public, their comments on this proposed final plat. And what we will do is, how many people here would like to comment on this? Can I see by a raise of hands? Not a lot. So I think what we'll do is, we will put, so that we can be fair in the amount of time that's given, and that everyone has an opportunity to present their comments, we'll put a limit of five minutes on comments. That's a lot -- that's pretty good. That's a fair amount of time. More than -- oftentimes, we do three minutes. But I think there's not that many people here that indicated that they want to address this, so I think we'll be good with five minutes. And don't feel like you have to take all five minutes. If you said your piece in two minutes, that's great. So with that, we'll go ahead and invite those who would like to address this final plat to come forward, give us your name and your address, and then limit your comments, please, to five minutes. Who would like to come up and comment?
And I'm just gonna, with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'll step aside and play with the microphone to see if I can help us all hear better.
Right.
While they're speaking.
Yes, thank you. Ma'am, ma'am, could I have you turn and address the Planning Commission?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. 719 East Center Street. And one of my biggest things I'm concerned about is fence. Our backyard, we've got teenagers, and it's just been on my mind a lot since I've been told that there's going to be development there, like privacy from our backyard. So that's on my mind.
I'm Lanell Perry, and again, 719. We're over to the right of Lot 4 and 3 is our backyard, part of our backyard. Anyway, I understand that water, additional water is going to be rerouted, and that's going to cut back on our water pressure. I don't know who to address that to, but I just think that taking away our water pressure to build another subdivision, I don't want to use the word "isn't fair," but it's going to cut back on ours and the other residents that are around us. And so I don't know if that's something that y'all can answer, or am I just stating statements for it to be noted? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Doug Farr. I represent the Taylors, who live just east of the property there, on the south side of 100 North, and Ms. Tice, who lives across the street, west of the property, on the north side of 100 North. And nearly two years ago, we were before this commission, when the developer was seeking recommendation for final plat approval on a similar, albeit very different, plat. And we're now before the commission again, after an appeal to the District Court, after the District Court, or that findings of fact and conclusions of law be submitted, that we have the opportunity to present our expert, our experts' opinion about the water issues. If the Commissioners who are here that were there two years ago may recall that a certain number of conditions were placed on the property, I want to talk about just one, which is that the stormwater problems be resolved. During the hearings that occurred over the last couple of years, it's completely undisputed that there have been serious stormwater problems at the property over the last several years. In fact, the city spent $30,000 to build a berm and create a detention basin on the north side of the property that's proposed to be developed. And the reason that the berm was, and the detention base was installed at the heavy expense of the city is because water backs up, as it is, as Hades Creek, which is to the east, releases water from the reservoir there, and it goes through the property, enters the city water drainage system at 100 North. Today, there's just one issue that we're asking the commission to consider, and that is whether this commission believes the developer has satisfied the condition that the commission placed on it to solve the stormwater problems. The developer's going to be here today, and as the staff has alluded to, will be alleging that it has a solution to the flooding problem. It's the same thing the developer said last time around, and the last plan has been modified today, after it read through and revised its plan according to our experts' opinions. My clients and the expert they retained, Mr. Cam Cutler, from Insight Engineering, disagree. So I just want to give you a little bit from both sides of the engineering report that I think have been presented to the commission. But for background, Hades Creek has two 18-inch pipes that release water from the reservoir that then goes across the property and enters the city system into one 18-inch pipe at 100 North. The obvious question is how do two 18-inch pipes of water then release and drain into one 18-inch pipe? And the answer is it doesn't, which is why the berm was installed, and why there's a detention basin there, and why there's been flooding issues on the problem. My client's engineer has had several discussions with the water master at Hades Creek, Mr. Dan Robinson. During these discussions, Mr. Robinson has explained that if there's a large storm, Hades Creek can open its two 18-inch outlet pipes. Mr. Robinson states that Hades Creek has no obligation to do a controlled release. The developer's in-house engineer states, in his August 28, 2019 report, that it is, quote, "It is true that two 18-inch pipes release water from Hades Creek reservoir." But the developer continues that it's positioned, that it is Hades Creek's responsibility to control the reservoir discharge through those pipes in a responsible manner. The developer provides no support for that. And my client's engineer's support comes from Hades Creek itself. And my client's engineer has asked that a letter be presented from Hades Creek supporting the developer's position, and that hasn't been provided. And the commission should require such a letter if developers' plans be executed, to make sure that this report and this development is adequately addressed. There are a couple other points that I'll go through quickly. My client's engineer says, if the release is not controlled, the single 18-inch pipe will not be sufficient to pass the stormwater. And the existing detention pond will no longer provide the additional detention needed, because it will be removed and replaced. In response, the developer's in-house engineer says, the city system, which is just downstream of the project, provides a single 18-inch pipe. There would be no purpose to provide a greater capacity than what the city system is capable of conveying. And it kind of misses the point. The point isn't to change the city's, the city system. The point is the development has to fit into the city system, and it has to provide for an adequate detention when that water backs up, because the 18-inch pipe that the city has doesn't maintain it. So my client's engineer continues that due to the existing slope on 100 North, there's not a flow path for a 100-year storm event. And the original engineering report from the developer's engineer recognized that the city engineer, who's now retired, required that this satisfy a 100-year storm event. But our city's engineer says it will not do that. And again, all the developer says is that it's not their obligation to do it. But they can't make a problem that exists worse by not providing adequate detention. The last point I just want to make is that the developer relies on the statute that it just requires a 10-year storm event, that this development has just satisfied a 10-year storm event. That's not what the city engineer originally required, and this commission should ask why the staff and why the city is changing its position, when it originally required that the development satisfy a 100-year storm event, which the developer's engineer recognized, and now it is only requiring a 10-year storm event. It is our position and our experts' opinion that this does not satisfy the requirements set out by this commission and by the city engineer previous to our appeal.
Hi. Sue Tice. I live on the north side of the property in question. And I just want to really reiterate something at the outset, something all of us have said many times before. We are not opposed to development of this property. We just want to be sure that it's being done in the most responsible way, properly, excuse me, and that all issues are resolved appropriately. That being said, the plat being presented here tonight is different from the last one that was presented to the city. And I just want to refer to things that you may very well be familiar with, but I'm not going to read them out because you're limiting my time. Municipal Code Title 19, Subdivisions 1911, Public Welfare. Municipal Code Title 19, PRUD 1734-1, Purpose. 1734-5, Additional Criteria 1B, D, and E, and 1734-5, Additional Criteria 2. Because based on the city's own municipal code, the PRUD subdivision does give the city more room to impose restrictions. Quite a while back in this process, Councilman Garn suggested to me that rather than just pointing out the negatives, perhaps we could propose an alternative plan for consideration, and we did just that. A plan was proposed that was drawn up by a developer that included everything each of the players wanted. Five lots for the developer, a road to the east of the development, which would both assure privacy for the Taylors and access for the Briggs, and sufficient water retention to reduce and even eliminate the possibility of flooding. It was actually very similar to one of the proposals Spencer Prince showed to us at the very beginning of this venture, which we said we preferred over the others that he showed us. However, this plan has been repeatedly ignored at every step of the process for some unknown reason. And I do have a copy of that proposed plan, which I will give to you momentarily. Moving on, in a letter we received from Hotel Behrens dated August 28, 2019, it refers to the city's municipal code 1963, which requires the adequate disposal of a 10-year frequency storm runoff within the subdivision and from adjacent properties. It also states in 1963, "The storm drainage plan is not intended to, is not intended and may not eliminate periodic accumulation of standing water on various lots in the subdivision during periods of heavy rainfall or runoff." And so, in previous iterations, the plat was to have made adequate disposal plans for a 100-year storm to eliminate that possibility. And in 1969, "Street drainage," it states, "street drainage and drainage structures shall be required where necessary in the opinion of the city council after recommendations by the city engineer." Everyone knows this is a flood-prone detention area, and so I'm wondering why ever happened to that 100-year storm requirement, and why it still wouldn't be in place. Thirty years ago, there were no water issues in that area, because there was enough of a retention area to both collect and absorb the water. There were only a few houses built intentionally on the high ground. As more houses were built in recent years with the approval of the city, the retention area was diminished, and flooding began to happen. I have here a picture of the same field, and that is where we used to keep our horses. And you can see, it was overcome with a rainstorm, one rainstorm, even after the city put in a drainage system with a berm to deal with the previously bad development decisions. With even more houses going in at that lower elevation without extreme measures being taken to mitigate it, there will be flooding, and everyone, not only the new residents, will be affected, which refers back to 1734-5-1B, avoidance of any disrupting element in the neighborhood. And the plan we have presented as an alternative, in which Spencer Prince had once suggested at the outset, takes care of that possibility by having a larger detention basin and houses on the higher ground. Additionally, to illustrate a point I may have made or may have left out based on time, in the section of letter titled "On-Site Subdivision Review and Upstream Drainage Basin and Hydrology Analysis," and I quote from the letter, "It is not the subdivision's responsibility to provide flood control, dictate how government or public utility entities provide flood control, or remediate off-site issues or problems." It seems to me that, again, Municipal Code Title 19, Subdivision 1911, Public Welfare, "Any proposed subdivision and its ultimate use shall be in the best interests of the public welfare and the neighborhood development of the area concerned," as well as 1734-5, Additional Criteria 1B, "the relationship to existing uses and avoidance of any disrupting element in the neighborhood." Both say that it is, in fact, the responsibility of the developer to be sure that there are no ill effects caused by the development, as well as, again, 1963, requiring storm runoff within the subdivision, adequate disposal and adjacent properties. If developers were not responsible for ill effects caused by their development, then why have codes and approvals and requirements at all? Imagine a city, what a city would look like if developers could do whatever they wanted to do without any consideration of how it affected others. It is my sincere hope that this Planning Commission takes into consideration the concerns of thus, those of us who are residents, current taxpaying citizens of Kaysville, who have lived here for a few years to over 30 years, because our concerns, as backed up by city code and law, should take precedence. I know that in your papers for tonight's agenda, there is a recommendation to approve this plat. Please remember that it is a recommendation and not a mandate, and please make your decision in the best interests of Kaysville. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before we continue--
Before we continue on, are the other planning commissioners having as hard a time understanding as I am? It's pretty tough. Lyle, I wonder, I don't know, I wonder if turning it down a little bit, the volume, might help?
That may help.
So that it doesn't echo so much? I'm not sure if it will, but we can try that.
Test, test, same echo. Any better? The buzz is worse than the echo. They're probably all similar. Check, check, test. Hello, hello, hello? I don't know if one's going to do us any better than another, is it? Hello? This one is better? I mean, pick your poison, and this one's better?
Hello? Okay. Thank you for your time and service. My name is Me Taylor. Can you hear me? Oh, good. Okay. I live at, we live at 636 East, which is the home that orders the proposed road onto the west side. And when we met together about this project, May of 2017, the commission determined that the project approval should be conditioned on four or five items. Upon review of the live stream of that meeting, a few clarifying guidelines by the commission and promises by the developer were included. One, the developer assured the commission that he would provide a cost-free, improved 30-foot paved access to the Briggs property. Two, the developer was to address and adequately handle the stormwater problem for all residents, including the Taylor property, which sits at the low point of both the development and the downhill slope of the Road 100 North. Three, the commission asked the developer to work with the Taylors to address grading issues and a snow removal plan for the proposed roadway that would be delivered at final plat approval. And four, the developer was to work with the city recommendations and provide a state-of-the-art, up-to-snuff geotechnical report. As neighboring landowners, we anticipated that these conditions and promises would be followed and honored, relying upon the assurance given by the commission that these concerns would be duly mitigated prior to final approval. Tonight, we come together nearly two and a half years later to revisit these issues, and I respectfully submit to the commission that the conditions have not adequately been met. The plan does not give the Briggs the cost-free paved 30-foot improved access that they were promised. The plan has been reviewed by a third-party engineer with whom the city is familiar and does business. His analysis submitted includes a review of the site design, proposed infrastructure, and hydrology, and indicates that the proposed engineering will not keep the water from flooding. The developer has not made any contact, as promised, with the Taylors regarding grading, privacy, or snow removal. And finally, the city engineer gave specific conditions to the developer's geotechnical engineer that the project was to be designed to retain and otherwise control a 100-year storm event. This plan does not do that. For these reasons, I respectfully ask that the final plat, as currently submitted, be denied tonight with modifications required for the possibility of future approval. Thank you.
My name is Dr. My name is Dr. Janil Henderson, and I'm referring to the property at 719 East Center Street. We moved there in 1956, and we had the entire property from Center Street down to the dead end. That is now the lower part of the Briggs. Though we sold part of that property to the Briggs, but I still own the land where the Hates Creek water goes through at the bottom of that property. And I can tell you from history, from, clear back from 1956, that the bottom half of our pasture always flooded. And we had horses, we had cows. That's why we moved there, for the three acres, was for a real convenience area. And in fact, at the time when we moved there and built, it was an unincorporated area. There were two houses on Center Street, our home and Goo's home. And then all of the rest of the houses have come in since then. And so the water situation is an issue for these people and their houses. We dealt with that with our animals, and we dealt with it with our horses and our cattle. And it was always a problem. It didn't matter whether it was a heavy rain season or a heavy snow season, there was always flooding down there. And the Jensen's, whose backyard came to the end of our pasture at that time, even though they were on higher land, also had flood problems along the fence line. That's one concern. The second concern was that I learned from Hates Creek yesterday that the development was trying to divert the water, the secondary water, from where it now runs, and that would put a real hardship on most of the people who have secondary water because it would reduce the pressure, might not have enough water, even though I have four and a half shares of water, not enough water to keep my property sufficiently irrigated. And I don't know about the other neighbors, but this is a concern for me. And with that, I pay the money for that irrigation water. I've been, we've been doing that since 1956, and this was never explained that there was going to be a deviance of that. And to put in a pump to try and get enough water pressure to get it up the hill from the bottom and up to where the house is, is going to be a big expense. It would involve going through the Briggs property, our property, a lot of money that is not necessary to be spent, in my opinion. The third concern I have is the concern of privacy. When Spencer approached me and he wanted to take part of my fence line on the south end, and I said no, then he tried to bully me into saying, "Well, you ain't on the property line." Our property was the first one that was ever surveyed, and all the other homes along Center Street and that went off of the stakes that my father put and are still there. I beg to differ. Not only are we accurate, but the state of Utah has a law that if no one contests your fence line in seven years, it's considered complete and no one can access and take or affect your property line. Well, we've been there since 1956. The other thing... Oh, excuse me, yes, okay. The last thing was that, when Spencer Prince approached me and wanted to take part of the property line, he said that he would provide privacy fences, that we would have privacy, that they could not see into our property, into our home, because of the way that he was putting the homes. That is a concern. We enjoy the backyard. We have family, and we have outings, and I don't want neighbors... I want to be able to walk around in the home and not worry about who's peeking in or being, living in a cave because of drapes and things and having my lifestyle affected. Basically, everything that Mr. Prince told me, he has not kept his word. I don't trust him.
My name is Cam Press, and I'm with Ensign Engineering. I'm here representing the Tyces and the Taylors. And I wrote the report that's in your packet. So I just want to just, just set the stage for a couple scenarios on this existing condition. At the end of the cul-de-sac at 100, 100 North, just to the west of the Taylor property, there's a high point in the road where the, where the road turns and drains west. But going back to the east on the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac's actually reverse grades and drains to the east. So that, that's what kind of sets the stage for the issue of the drainage coming down from Hates Creek, that when it hits that point, it ha, if, if the storm drain, the 18-inch storm drain doesn't handle the capacity, the only place the water has to go is right into the Taylors driveway, which has happened in the past. That's why the city built the berm to create a detention pond to prevent that from happening. So the next issue I want to talk about is, in my discussions with Dan Robinson of Hates Creek, I was there, and there's actually in the packet, there's a photo I took in April when the irrigation pond was full. And in my discussions with Dan, the reason he keeps the pond so full is they have, they serve this area just down from the pond, and they struggle with, he keeps the pond as high as he can because that's what creates pressure. And you've heard several of the residents here talk about how they, they're concerned about pressure. They have a very minimum pressure because he keeps it high. He keeps the pond high so he can. So in the packet, there's a photo of the outlet control structure from the, from the irrigation pond, Hates Creek Reservoir. And he told me that he keeps it six inches below. So it, he keeps it six inches below from where there's two stand pipes in the reservoir, that once it hits a level, it'll just flow in. And, and what Dan told me is there is no restrictions. He made it very clear that, you know, his responsibility is, that's not a detention pond. That reservoir is built solely to provide water pressure for the users on his system, and his responsibility is to provide pressure. So there, there, it's not that, that Dan is doing anything that, or Hates Creek's not doing anything they're not supposed to. It's just, it doesn't provide detention. So in that scenario, from April 15 through October 15, when that pond is full, there's six inches of freeboard. So if we have, I won't even say if, when there's a 100-year storm, there's only six inches of water that can be there before it starts spilling. And, and the outlet is two full 18-inch pipes. So the concern is, is the development shows right now they're going to extend the 18 because there is only an 18-inch pipe in 100 North, and they're just extending it up. But the issue is, is where they extend it up onto the Briggs property, there's no longer a detention basin. When the 100-year flow comes and it, he has to full release, there will be nowhere for that water to go. And so, my concern with this is, if you look at Lot 1, in my professional opinion, I would never build my own home on Lot 1. It's surrounded by detention ponds on two sides, plus it has the Hates Creek irrigation outflow potential on the other side. So it could be surrounded by three lots. And essentially, you're just moving the same problem. I mean, really, the Taylors' home is really in a hole. I mean, this isn't the developer's problem. It's kind of a compounded problem in that the cul-de-sac should have never been built with a reverse grade. It should have been built up so they could continue to drain down. But these are the scenarios that they're faced with. And so, I just wanted to conclude that there are other options to lay this out. The way the public right-of-way was proposed, there was an area left on the north. Yes, you can't put it for a lot, but it probably should be reserved for a detention area as it is today. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Matt Briggs. I'm the one that has property to the east of all this that needs the easement to get up in there. First of all, I want to tell you, I've pretty much given up hope on this whole process and the way I've been treated throughout, beginning with the city council. I want to remind you that the city actually owned that piece of property that runs right through to the middle. They gave it away, Mr. Prince, so that he can put my access wherever he feels fit to foot it. No one's ever asked or approached the city or from the developer about where access would work out for me. My point is, the difficulty of these pieces of property, in the beginning, I was promised a 30-foot paved drive. Now, it's turned out that it looks like half of the easement was promised to get me in and out of it because of the detention. And it's not going to be fixed. So I'm sitting here looking at this and thinking, "Oh, the citizens of Kaysville, I hope you'd want to let a subdivision succeed rather than fail." All I see is, you're going to leave a meat-infested lot there. I'm not going to fix it. I don't think anybody next to me. But it's going to be an ice. You'd have to, you'd have to hire a lawyer. You'd have to spend tens of thousands of dollars trying to get the city to do us right. I just feel like every step of the way has been political. And the citizens don't really matter. I'm, I'm really disgusted with that because I thought this city was better than this. But from what I've seen in the last few years trying to build that, the citizens don't really matter. But I would hope that you would at least follow the law when I was on this stuff. And I have a question for you. Did the city, however, an independent engineer, if you're going to take a look at it? Who's deciding which engineer is the right engineer? The developer has their engineer deciding, saying it's going to be fine. We have our engineers who says it's going to be fantastic. Which, after living there for 15 years, I have no doubt that that lot on number two or the house on number one, it's what, it's my question. Us being the ones who were there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we don't know what we're talking about here. But I have no doubt that we're flooded. But I seriously want to know who, who's looking at this engineering and deciding who's right and who's wrong. If we don't have an independent engineer look at this, you guys are just looking at it as trustworthy and right. I, I have a problem. I hope you guys will do the right thing, at least stop and look at this thing in a sensible way. There's another way to design this. We showed it to the builders. We have no problem with this piece of property being developed. I just think it needs to be done the best way for everybody involved. Instead of setting it up to fail later. Thank you for your time.
I'm Matt Briggs, Matt White. And when we were first approached about this, we were, sold the bill of goods. We have no problem with development, absolutely not. Very, very first statute, it's not landlocked, land ownership. That's been kind of ignored and put to the back of the, of the concerns for everybody else. I know maybe if we were a little more important and knew the right people, we'd be treated differently. Originally, we're concerned because we know the Taylors and the Tyces. We've watched the new home built to the place where it never should be, and all the money that's been spent by the city and the taxpayers, they're still a strong money. But what they went through, believing in what they were told by a city engineer, find out none of it was true, is very disappointing. Our original concern was making sure somebody didn't end up with, you know, building their house in a swamp in this, the house Lot 1. And, you know, I guess nobody cares what's right anymore, and that's really disappointing. I thought Kaysville was a very nice town. We love our neighbors, but it just has been handled so badly. As Matt mentioned, it seems like when there's two drastically conflicting reports about, you know, geotechnical surveys, water, you know, somebody needs to say, "What's going on here? We need to have somebody look at it and we can trust it." And that's not happening. And, you know, it is, it's, we're going to end up with, you know, water troubles, and we'll be the ones who are supposed to, because these laws don't protect you. I certainly hope we've got some fresh faces here and people that'll look at this with a new eye. We're, we're open to development, but we don't want to be landlocked, and we hope that we want better for our new citizens coming in.
Is there anyone else? All right. Our next order of business on this will be to... All right, our next order of business on this will be to hear from the applicant.
We appreciate the opportunity to present before the commission. My name is Spencer Prince, and I'm the developer, along with my partner Craig Larson, who is a civil engineer as well, and he's actually licensed in most of the states in the United States. I'm going to yield most of the time to him because it seems that most of the questions were technical. When we developed this property, we developed it to be a very inviting and beautiful family residential development. We designed it so that the lots were west-facing, and that it's accessed through a private drive and a cul-de-sac. And we feel that we've treated every one of the requirements. I'll let him speak to that. And so I'll turn the time over to Craig.
Hi, my name is Craig Larson. 2072 West 2260 South Woods Cross is my address. I will try to address very specifically all of the previous comments that we have heard tonight, as we have taken each and every single one of those into account to show that we have addressed that, and that we meet city code and the requirements that are placed upon us. The big thing is obviously the storm drain runoff and the Hades Creek irrigation lines. The city, like the engineer from Ensign mentioned, there is one single 18-inch diameter pipe in the street, in the city system. I'm not sure we could build anything that would stop Noah's flood from causing damage should there be a huge catastrophic event upstream. We could not build enough that would take care of that. So we have maintained the same capacity that the city has provided in 100 North. The reason that there was even a 30-inch pipe, or that there is a 30-inch pipe in there right now, is because it was a surplus piece of pipe that the city already owned. There was no engineering to it. There's been mention of an existing detention pond there. This is true. There is an existing berm there to act as a type of flood control for the creek there when this comes down. We are replacing and maintaining 100% of that volume in our detention pond, although not required by city code. City code requires that we do it for our property and our development. Above and beyond that, we are including that existing volume that is there. The former city engineer also, due to practicality, asked us to provide sufficient volume for stormwater storage for the two parcels just to the east of us, owned by the Briggs, should they ever decide to develop. And we have done that and are providing volume for them should they ever decide to develop that or do what they would like. Their stormwater storage will be taken care of. And per city code, it does meet the 10-year storage requirements as required. We do meet city code. As far as Hades Creek, being able to discharge whatever they want and run it down there, I'm not sure I would agree with Mr. Robinson's reasoning that he can discharge whatever he wants, but that's not my argument. I would mention that there is a lot of ditch line and fence crossings in between our development and the outlets for Hades Creek, which they may be discharging two 18-inch pipes, but they're certainly a large amount of losses in friction and pipe-sized fence crossings between us and them. So the reasoning of two 18 inches out, we need to match two 18 inches, it's, technically it is not equal. But needless to say, the city only has a single 18-inch line downstream of us. The one thing I have found is, observed based on conversations, as well as physically gone out there myself and observed this during a storm event, is that this is not a flood issue. It is a maintenance issue. I've been out there when there's been heavy rainfall, and the water started to build up a little bit. And it built up enough that it started to trickle over into the bermed area that the city built. And the reason was, the graded inlet that was built at the bottom of this creek to inlet this stream into the city system is not regularly maintained and cleaned. It is, has a fine grate and easily gets caught up. I spent 10 or 15 minutes there with my bare hands and a fence pole that I could find in the ground, pulled the debris off of the grate, and the water went right down within a matter of minutes, and there was nothing flowing over into the bermed area anymore. So it really solidified that this is a maintenance issue. It's part of, do you want me to address the questions or hold my five minutes?
I think, is that all you've got?
Well, if they had more questions or comments, I was going to try to address all of them if they would like.
Let's wait until we get to the discussion with the commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Oh, yes, sir?
Good evening. Bless you. My name is Ken Brown. I represent the developer in this case. I just wanted to address a few issues in preparation for whatever questions that you're going to have, see if we can clear some of the ground before we get there. So first off, in addressing the legal procedure where we're at, I wanted it to be clear that the district court did not find that the developer failed to meet any of the conditions imposed by the city. The court, the district court's opinion was based on the absence of findings from which it could determine whether or not we had met the legal requirement. So then I just want that to be clear in terms of, as you're looking at what you've got before you. Regarding the conditions, I just want to address a few possible misunderstandings that we have. First off, the developer was required to resolve access for the Briggs's two properties. We've never disputed that, we've never fought against that, we have been willing to do that. I, as the developer's counsel, have been in contact with the Briggs's counsel in order to address that very problem. It was my understanding, and I believe it was the Briggs's counsel's understanding, that we had reached an agreement regarding the access agreement. We have drafted extensive access agreement and maintenance agreement that provides for a delineation of the rights and responsibilities of the parties for access. Primarily, what it is, is that whoever uses parcel one for access, which includes, I mean, you can't see it there, but the two lots that are adjacent to parcel one, the owners of those lots are responsible, or I'm sorry, the users of the parcel for access are responsible for its maintenance. We discussed it extensively, and I believe we had resolved the issue. There did remain a problem which Mr. Bachman, who was their counsel, raised, and again, which we have not contested, was that it was unclear if the city, based on the, just the nature of the parcel, if both of the lots would be buildable. We are under the understanding, based on what we've been told from the city, that there is no problem there. And I just want that to be clear. Even though there might have been miscommunication, misunderstandings in regards to the access, that issue has been resolved, to our understanding. Now, it's obviously not what, might not be what the Briggses would like it to be, and it was meant to be a compromise. And that was, we felt that had addressed that issue. The water issue, I will leave to Craig and Spencer because they have the technical know-how. And I also just wanted to make sure that it was clear that even though there have been changes made to the plat, the final plat now that you've seen, changes have been made in consultation both with the city and with plaintiffs. Now, obviously, the plaintiffs might feel that we have, they have not been heard adequately, that I understand that. But these are not, these changes that have been made were, have been spurred by the developer's attempts to meet all of the conditions that have been imposed upon them, especially by the city. Because obviously, it's the city that's the one that will approve the plat. And in that, again, I understand that the plaintiffs feel that they could have, that they have not been heard, understand that. However, the decision to approve the plat is the city's. And the developer has tried to work with the plaintiffs and with the city in order to make sure that concerns as they were raised were addressed, if they could be addressed, what changes needed to be made. And I just want sure that that is made clear. And then, I suppose, for the rest, we'll answer the questions that you have, once you have any questions.
I think we're good.
No, I cannot answer any questions about that.
All right. Thanks very much. All right, commissioners, let's turn to our group and hear whatever comments or discussion that you have.
When did city council approve this?
City council, the ordinance has changed, so the city council is not involved in the approval of the final plat.
The planning commission.
Oh. When did they? So the planning commission approved the preliminary, and that originally, it went to the council for the final plat approval. Is that correct, Lyle?
Correct. The original process, the planning commission made a recommendation, and then the city council, I think it was June of 2017, approved the preliminary plat at that time.
And since that time, the ordinance has changed?
For the proceedings, yes.
And so final plats are now approved by the planning commission?
That is correct.
All right, other discussion, council members? It's your pleasure.
So I'm interested in this comment by the developer's attorney that they thought they had an agreement with the Briggs. Is there a signed agreement?
No. We have drafted, the agreement has been drafted, it has been sent to Mr. Bachman. We made substantive revisions and numerous conversations. However, Mr. Bachman raised the point that the Briggses wouldn't want to sign this if the city was then going to turn around and say, okay, well, you actually can't have two buildable lots. That was the reservation in terms of signing. The agreement's drafted, no changes need to be made from our end, but that was the reason why it was not signed.
The Briggs are saying no to that. Do you want to briefly explain why that's not true, or what your position is on the
He's right, we worked on an agreement, but we came to no agreement. There's still an issue of easement access over a small piece that goes in there, and I want to make sure because I don't trust the people. It's proven that it can't be fixed. I shook hands with the guy one day and made a deal in the beginning of this, and I thought it was all done. The very next night, he threw me under the bus to the city council, and he niggled everything he could. So I don't trust them, but no, there's no agreement marked out. We've been working on the details of it, but we haven't even communicated about that for probably two months.
And your attorney's not here tonight?
Well, I think it's absolutely ridiculous that that's just an unpaid piece of paper that's going to be a real disaster.
So you, so you, in your mind, the paving is an issue?
Absolutely.
Okay. The width?
The utility is.
The width of it, the width of it due to the stormwater detention that's being.
Is that right? I don't know what. All I hear her say is somebody said, all you need is 20 feet. Nobody ever showed anything in writing. It's just, ah, I bought this property, it's going to be fine for the lot. I don't know.
So when you bought this property, were you, did you have a different access? I mean, what was your understanding?
Before I bought this property, I went to the city, I sat down with Andy Hough, and he told me, basically, don't ask for that piece of property because you'll have to pay taxes. You own three sides around it, so any time you ask for it, it'll give up. All of a sudden, they decide to develop it, and the city just threw me under the bus, said I didn't have it.
Well, but you could have taken that, you could have asked for that property.
This property is a good one.
And had you?
Even that, even that, they said it's done. I've never seen a piece of paper, never seen any documentation. I went down to the city, talked to Lyle, and he told me he was going to get me some documentation.
Documentation of what? I'm sorry.
The city is getting that piece of property. So I got my new tax bill.
Can we just?
A couple of weeks ago, and nothing's on there.
Your tax bill has changed or has not changed?
I don't know what.
So let's just clarify what property we're talking about. You, the right-of-way used to continue up into your parcel right here. There was a little square rectangle. When the city vacated this and gave it to Hotel Barons, I presume, they also vacated this portion and gave it to you, but you're saying you have not seen anything that confirms that? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Exactly.
I hear what you're saying. My understanding is that it has, that it is official, so to speak. But the fact that he hasn't received anything, you know, that's a little concerning. But whoever made this drawing, this isn't definitive, but whoever made this drawing, I believe, this shows the new property lines. That's a Briggs parcel, that's a Briggs parcel, and it's, there's no right-of-way in there. It is recorded as you own it.
Well, and that's, I was going to say, I mean, this is a matter of public record. Their conveyance should be recorded if it's legitimate.
The thing of it is, I've always been a D-back.
Lyle, do you know if that property is paid?
Not the stress, it's good to have a little comical difficulty. Yeah, so Mr. Briggs did come to me, and I apologize if the documentation wasn't forwarded along to. I'd have to go back and check if it was ever sent or what the case is. But yes, it has been vacated, and that was the process by which we did it, and it conveyed the property that they would have expected to the Briggs family, which is there. So we could follow up on that as staff and ensure that they have documentation that's verifying that. I'm not positive right here off the cusp is what the proceedings were there. Likewise, that property, which was in between the pieces proposed by the developer, was also conveyed to them at the same process with that street vacation.
In the preliminary plat, was there any condition or was there any mention of that access being paved?
EJ in the back. Under the written minutes, I don't think that was one of the documented conditions as part of the process. It may have been stated and expressed that that was one of the desires and concerns. I've gone back and listened to the minutes, but there are many of them. I do not recall verbally what was stated.
I can recall that we discussed paving, whether, maybe Matt remembers, but whether we, whether we said definitively that's what it has to be, but I do, I don't remember that, but I do remember talking about it being paved. Because my recollection was, this was part of the discussion. We were saying, okay, look, if the right-of-way was not vacated, which is what the Briggs were operating on, that assumption, that it was going to come up to their, to the western edge of their property, then it's a city right-of-way, and it was, it would have to be paved. On the other hand, part of the discussion was, well, if the Hotel Barons property wasn't there, and the city right-of-way was going to have to be paved for the Briggs to develop their property, the developer pays for improvements, and so the Briggs were going to have to pay to pave it. That was discussion that I remember. And so that's, I don't know what, where we came, I can't remember where we came down on the paving, but that's why paving was discussed, to bring it up to the western edge of their property.
At one point, they had a paved, it's on one of the original miles, paved easement on the very north side right over the track. on the very north side, right over the track. On the map, showed it as being paved.
So, um, okay, but when you bought the property, what was your understanding of access?
It's the city street coming right up to, right in between our two pieces of property. But any time I wanted that piece of property that the city would vacate, it was there.
And what piece of property are you talking about? The in-between?
The square you're talking about, that's in there.
Which has now been vacated in your favor.
I still, I haven't seen anything yet.
Can I, can I just point something out and see if, I think we had this conversation, but, but, uh, and I'm, I'm interested just to confirm this. If, if this project we're talking about here never came before us, and, and, and it looked, it looked like this, so here's the right-of-way that comes up, right? This is right-of-way. You own, this is before anything happened. You own that one, and you own this one. Um, you say to yourselves, "Okay, we're at a point where we, we now, we want to develop these." You would go to the city, and they would have, they would have vacated this right-of-way, and now you have this big rectangle piece to do something with. Um, and you say, "We want to, we want to put two units on there or something." Do you understand that if, if this cul-de-sac would have sta- it would have stayed as is, you would have had to pay to improve this entire right-of-way with, with asphalt and sidewalk to get up here?
Correct. I, I, you know, I've never said that I was ready to develop tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I understand, but if you, if this hadn't happened, you understand that that would have come out of your pocket?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I would have been okay with that. But it, you know, it still would have been the city street, so I wouldn't have to deal with an HOA or anything like that. I would have dealt with the city, my property, everything. I'd still pay the lease. Still legal, in my opinion, once the council did it by giving that letter.
But, given our way, we mean vacate, right? It was vacated, and was it vacated on the condition of there being access easement? I mean, isn't that what the understanding was, and did that not happen?
Yeah, the understanding, I believe, was that there would be not only access, um, provisions for access to the property, but provisions for utilities to go to the property.
Right, so you'd have an easement, so an easement in favor of the Briggs over that to get from the end of the cul-de-sac that currently exists to the Briggs property, right?
That's correct, yeah. They, they were concerned that, uh, the property should maintain its ability to be developed by access and by utility.
So, help me understand why, where you're prejudiced here. If you have, if you have the, you still have an access easement, assuming you have one, that's what we're being told, and, um, you, you have the property that's been vacated to you, you don't know the record of that, but you should be able to check tomorrow, you could check tonight on the county, on the, online, just go on Davis County. But regardless, let's assume that's in place, then you still have your access, and what you're saying the difference is, is that it's now, in the, if, without this development, you'd have to pave that street, because it was, pay for the pavement of the street, but it would be a publicly maintained street. Now, you have a nebulous right or obligation with respect to easement, with access of the, maintenance of the easement. Is that right?
One of the biggest concerns I have, I don't know if that's being used as a detention bond, just, like, I don't know.
When you say that, you meaning around, that, in other words, your access easement is not adequate?
Detention bond, I don't know if it is.
So, if, so if I can address that, then, if, uh, if I understand you, you're, you're saying you don't, let's assume that that detention is the size that it is. You're not sure that the remaining width is sufficient to access your two properties here per the city code? Is that what you're wondering?
That's a different thing.
And if, and we, I mean, I think we can answer that today. Lyle, is that enough to give them access to develop these two parcels? Or, or Nick, either one of you?
Yeah, so city ordinance under the PRUD chapter that determines the regulations for flag lots, um, has different provisions. So, for a single flag lot, a 30-foot access is sufficient, and it doesn't specify the width that's needed for drive access to the property. Where access to two lots or a double flag lot, it requires 36 feet of width and access, 20 of which would be drivable or accessible surface. So, if they meet those requirements, they meet all the minimums, and I believe in this case, it does have the 20 feet necessary to provide access to, potentially to develop lots.
So, if there's an easement that's been recorded, and I, and I assume, I mean, that's how it should have happened, an easement should have been recorded that allows for, that provides you access. And that easement, if it's an access easement, should provide you access easement that is, access that is sufficient to get to your property and develop it. And so, if that's not happened, I think that's a problem. If it's happened, then I think the problem is solved.
Right, I just don't know. Because I get misinformation every time I ask.
Well, no, I mean, you need to have somebody, you or your attorney or somebody, look at the Davis County records, County records, and see what's recorded. I mean, that's the beauty of this whole land process, is that it's recorded, and if it's, and if the easement is sufficiently drafted. No, let me just finish. If the, if the easement is sufficiently drafted, your problem is solved. And so, what I want to hear from you or your attorney is, "Yeah, I've looked at the easement, and it doesn't do what it's supposed to do," or, "Yeah, it does what it's supposed to do." And then, I think we know the answer. Right now, what you're telling me is, "You don't know, and you don't trust the people who've told you." I get that.
Got a different answer.
Right, but, but the, but the beauty of this whole system we have is that it's, something should be recorded, and it should guarantee you those rights.
I don't know what the statute is. I don't know what the fire department has to have.
Right, well, we ju- we just have Lyle telling us that it, it is sufficient, but, you know, that's what, right?
Yeah, I gotta take that at face value.
Right, well, right, but I mean, i- i- I guess what I would say is, if you have an attorney, have that attorney look at it and say yes or no. I mean, if you don't, if, if you don't feel like what you're getting is the straight answer, that's, you know, unfortunately, that's the American way.
Very unfortunate.
Well, but that's, yeah, I mean, that's the system.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to hear from the, the legal counsel for the applicant to respond.
If there's any, I, I can answer some of these questions. First off, the Briggses have maintained a prescriptive right of access. They have, it's obviously not recorded, I mean, they, this is, I, and I am, it's just for overall detail. These are things I've discussed with the Briggses. Now, regarding what, the reason why we drafted the shared access maintenance agreement is the reason for the way we did it, because it has never been clear to us that the Briggses intend to actually develop the lots. That is something that they have, that they have said, who informed me of, and that they did not want to pay to have to maintain driveway that they never intended to use or develop. So, the reason we drafted the access agreement, which is the way that we did, is that the party that used the lot for access, which required, they developed it, is the whole purpose of the agreement. The Briggses never use it, um, or, if they never develop their lot, they never have to worry about paying for it. It's the whole purpose of the agreement. Now, they, it's not going to be something that, if the Briggses choose never to develop or never to use it, they're not going to be responsible for maintaining it. They're not going to be. And it's only, it's, it is only the case that if they choose to use it for purposes of development, that in that, they will be responsible to help, to maintain it. I just don't understand.
And if the easement is recorded, that, that gives them, okay.
No. It is a shared access maintenance agreement. We have provided it to them and said, "We are desiring to sign," but it has not been recorded because they have not signed it. And again, the reason why it has not been signed, and it's not been recorded, is because they had this concern about the width of the lot not allowing them to build.
So, so could you grant them an easement, not an agreement, but grant them an easement that, that, that gives them this right to access through vehicular, pedestrian, and utility access?
That is exactly what the eas- so, I should say, that what?
But, but, just let me finish. So, you'd grant them an?
Yes, sorry.
Grant them an easement, get it recorded?
Yes.
And then, and basically what you're saying, which is if they have to, if they choose to develop, then they'll have to pay for it, et cetera, but isn't that a way that solves the problem that they have their access and you don't need to get their agreement?
To, but, yes, we could, but we, I, I didn't want to proceed that way because I didn't want to give them this easement agreement and then just say, "Okay, you guys are left holding the bag." And obviously, their council didn't want that either. The hope was that we could draft this shared access maintenance agreement, have it all signed, then record it. I mean, we could record this right now. Um, it's a little bizarre to deed them an easement against their will, but that's kind of been the position that we have found ourselves in, is moving forward without their approval. So, that, that's been the problem. But yes, we could, I could cut out the easement language from the agreement right now and sign it, record it.
The agreement language?
Yes.
Can I follow up on that? The, currently, the Briggs access, even though the right-of-way is vacated, and I would reference you to your city attorney, they still maintain rights to access their property through the vacated right-of-way until they are provided a new access easement. And the access and utility easement is proposed on parcel one as part of the plat. It, it is listed on the plat and will be recorded, uh, as part of the plat, we hope, but they currently do have the right to access their land right there, even though the right-of-way has been vacated because of prescriptive law.
I have a question for you. Did you create this drawing?
I did not, no.
Oh.
Our, our land surveyor did.
Oh, okay. Um, well, okay, well, then, I mean, that makes it even better. The surveyor's not here. Will you zoom back in on that, Lyle? I know, I know this, this is just a, I actually think it's a minor point, because it's, like Matt said, it can just be confirmed. If we had internet access, one of us could confirm it. But there's two tax parcel ID numbers. There's a tax parcel ID number right there, and there's a tax parcel ID number right there. Both of them are the Briggs. That shows to me that it has been recorded, this easem- or this, uh, previous right-of-way has been vacated, and there's two parcels that the Briggs own.
Can I comment on that? I know our survey pretty well. Uh, our, our subdivision plat, it does not affect the Briggs property. It does not consolidate those lots. They, they have the power to do that themselves. The recorded document is a city ordinance, which is recorded, and I do have a copy, and it's, city obviously has a copy. It, it's a city ordinance that was recorded that vacated the right-of-way. We, we don't have the power to consolidate their lots. That's hands-off.
I wasn't saying that, and, and I'm not, I'm not saying you were saying that, I'm saying that. I'm just saying that when a surveyor pulls adjacent parcels, which is what this is, and it has nothing to do with, with this in the confines of the Hotel Barron's property, they, they, this is, I, in my opinion, this is accurate information that we can rely on just to say what's surrounding, and there's two parcels, two parcel ID numbers that are the Briggs. From a previously recorded plat, had nothing to do with Hotel Barron, related to the vacation of the right-of-way.
Correct.
Can I also just speak briefly on the easement issue? And I don't presume to know the negotiations of the parties, but I believe that one reason there's not a recorded easement across the Hotel Barron's property is that one of the cleanest ways to establish that easement is through this final plat process. So, I think the parties have probably, from what I can gather from the discussion tonight, negotiated about the access and would perfect that access through the notes on this plat, which indicates that parcel one would grant access to those two tax ID numbers that the
All right. Any other questions on the access?
Well, they're saying it's not addressed, that the people here are saying it's not adequately addressed.
Yeah, so the, the question from the commission is whether or not there's a development agreement in place. Um, this one, I do not believe was done with the, with the development agreement as a component of, of its approvals.
Yeah. If you're, if you're, well, yeah, it could be.
Okay, I'm, sorry, I don't want to, I thought this easement issue we could resolve, and I, I think I'm pretty close, but this is kind of what I think is where it is, is that if there is a, if the Briggs have a prescriptive easement, and I'm not saying you do, if you do, then that's going to exist regardless. And what was said here was that if the city, um, if the city vacates it, it's still preserved, which is my correct, as far as I understand the law. And so, um, again, I, I, I think you should be able to figure out whether you have an easement, either recorded or not. And, and you need to have access, and I think you have access, but that's something that, you know, I'm not going to be your attorney and tell you you have it, especially if you have an attorney. But I think access, I think that problem is addressed.
Okay. I'm moving on. And as city attorney mentioned, I think that is protecting the plat. Would, would this be approved?
I mean, uh, we, not only is it a good discussion, like, it's an important discussion, it, we have to have the discussion, and we have to, in our minds, resolve one way or the other, whether we think there has been an easement granted, because that's one of the, one of the conditions for preliminary plat. That's the first one, actually. So, I, I think, if we just want to start there, I think, this is not the best one. Will you look at the other one that's a little more clean, Lyle? That one. So, parcel one, not lot one, parcel one, um, that, that seems to me to resolve the question of whether there is access given, and, uh, Lyle mentioned that the width, uh, is sufficient for two lots. Um, and, and so, so I think it's there. Let me just say, as a side note, this is something we've, that I've already just talked about. So, we just, we do have internet access, we just looked it up. The way I look at the parcel map, there actually isn't two lots. They haven't been consolidated yet, but there's a lot here that, that's in the Briggses' name. There's the old right-of-way that is its own standalone lot that's in the Briggses' name. Then there's this lot that's in the Briggses' name. So, if and when they develop these, it'll just be an easy, uh, side note to the process that those become consolidated. So, but, back to my point. Number one, is there an easement given, um, with, uh, utility rights, access rights? And I think the answer to that is yes, in my mind.
We had four, basically four conditions to see if they're met, and one easement. Check.
Oh, there's five. Paragraph 29 in the proposed, proposed findings of facts and conclusions, well, that's five.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about what five there are. So, number one was the easement, which we just talked about.
Two is stormwater.
Number two is the, uh, plat being accompanied by a geotechnical and engineering plan addressing mitigating stormwater issues to the satisfaction of the planning commission. We do have a report, or we have, uh, the opinion of the city attorney, not attorney, I'm sorry, engineer, Lyle, uh, that indicates that, that he feels like it has been adequately addressed. Is that correct?
Correct. So, we've received a geotechnical and hydraulic study that's been reviewed. Um, we have on-staff engineer within our public works department, but we also consult with a CRS engineering firm, uh, to, to review it, and they have, have done so and feel that it meets and is adequate.
So, I, did you hear that? Okay, so?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we have, uh, multiple agencies that look over the, the subdivision plat as part of our review internally. Uh, on-staff, we have a civil engineer within our public works department that looks at certain items, but we also utilize and have done so in this one, a third-party entity, CRS Engineering out of Farmington, um, that's completed reviews, has seen both the developer's proposal, but also the, um, alternate considerations, and, and even such, feels that those provisions have been met, that meet our requirements. that those provisions have been met, that meet our requirements.
Did this consultant look at, at the ensign?
Yes, yeah, they've been provided, the third-party, uh, neighboring property owners' considerations.
Okay.
And have taken that into their review account.
And do we have anything, any kind of a written letter or opinion from, is it CRS? Is that you said?
I probably have an email in there in phone conversations, I don't have a formal letter currently provided for you.
Finishing our list, number three was snow removal.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about the storm water.
Yeah, I just want to get the numbers, so we know what we're talking about first.
You want to just do that real quick? Cover those three.
So we did one, easement, two, storm water, three is, okay.
Privacy fencing in trees, on which, uh, if you look at the, the map that's up there right now on the screen, it, it shows that. Uh, number four was that, uh, plat application, the final plat be accompanied by a geotechnical report? And number five was that the final plat be reduced to five lots.
So, uh, can we easily check off the last one?
I think so.
Okay. I should have figured.
The, the last one, check.
Thank you.
Number four, that the final plat application was accompanied by a geotech report, Lyle, just, I think I heard you say this, but let's just check this one off, check the box. A geotechnical report was submitted, and the city internal civil engineer, and then CRS, the city's consulting engineer, has also reviewed the geotechnical report. Yes or no?
Yes, we have received the geotechnical report and hydraulic study, and it has been reviewed by our engineering staff. And they have found it to be adequate and acceptable for our requirements.
So is this the storm water issue, or is this separate?
So, um, is there a difference between the geotechnical and then the storm water report? Were those two separate?
It may have the engineering individuals here on, on hand maybe, maybe discuss that. I personally noted that it stated both items with it, so, um, they can speak to that more specifically, I, I believe.
I mean, a geotechnical report is study of the soil, dirt, and a storm water runoff is a related, but not the exact same thing, right?
Correct, correct. Geotech is for building foundations, soils, uh, groundwater levels, how high that is. Hydraulic report and hydrology is how much runoff from upstream rainfall and rainfall on the site there is, and there are. He said three, four, and five were fine with them, and they have no objection.
All right. And one. Breaks them into, and then that's the.
So which one is number two, storm water?
Storm water is number two, yeah. Okay, well, okay, commissioners, you've heard a couple of different opinions on storm water issue. Uh, the city's engineer and a, and a third-party engineer that the city engaged have indicated that they feel like the storm water issues are adequately addressed with this proposal. We've heard an engineer from, uh, I assume the residents, uh, around, uh, feel like that it has not been adequately addressed.
So for what it's worth, I think, uh, if we have a, if we've engaged, if the city's retained or engaged a third-party engineer to render an opinion, I'd like to see that, or at least see something that says, hi, I'm engineer, I've looked at this report, I've looked at that report, and this is my conclusion. And, and if the staff is saying that's what we have, then I trust the staff to, to see that, but, to have, to say that, but that's what I'd like to see in this packet. And, um, that to me is, you know, that, that to me is important.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make the record clear, Mr. Larson, um, with Hotel Baron's approached and was going to address items three, four, and five, however, he was discussed briefly with Doug Farr, who represents the Taylor and Tices, and he, they, that's why the conversation on items three, four, and five ended, because Mr. Farr represented that he had no problems with three, four, and five. I just would like the record to be clear as this is involved in litigation.
That's, that's good clarification, and, and we're.
I just want to be clear that they're satisfied with three, four, and five, the Taylor and Tices.
Good, thank you.
And so, um, and we've, we've addressed one, the easement, so as, we're talking about the storm water. And, and, and we've talked about the city in retaining this third ex, this outside consultant. The other question I have, and I need clarity on, is this concept that at one point we were requiring a hundred-year flood protection, and now it's only ten-year?
I think I can comment on that. On one of the earliest hydrology reports, it was mentioned in there, a hundred-year storm, and that was done wrong. The city ordinance is a ten-year storm, and that's what we're required to do, and, uh, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah, my understanding is the city ordinance requires ten-year.
Right. Uh, I believe the hundred-year confusion came because it was listed in one of the early reports, uh, of ours, uh, for the hydrology report, and that it was erroneously listed there as part of it, when city only requires a ten-year.
So was the error a typo? The person meant to put ten and, and it put in a hundred, or did they mean a hundred and it?
I would have to go, and I don't know the answer to that, I'd have to read it again.
Okay, but, but to be clear, we're not talking, this, whoever put this hundred-year, is that, was that a condition? Was that city?
That was, was our, uh, external hydraulic engineer, hydrology engineer, that provided that.
Okay. So, Lyle, do we have, uh, do you have any recollection, is there any record of the city requiring a hundred-year flood protection?
Yeah, my understanding of it was when we originally received documentation on this proposed subdivision, the report that was produced by the developers team at the time recommended that, and so the city engineer, following that report and the guidance and that documentation, that you're showing that you need that, so provide that, if that's what the geotech and hydrology study needs. I believe it was decided through the process, originally when final plat was approved, that the ten-year was in fact the proper, um, requirement, and that's where the original approval came in at that time. And I, I believe that's where the reviews have been pursued under this most recent, uh, review.
So ballpark, I'm not asking you to give me a bid, but what's the cost difference in a hundred-year versus ten-year protection?
Well, and so you're going to, if, if you allow us to do only our subdivision, it's much more reasonable if we.
You mean allow, you mean require?
If, if, if we could do the hundred-year storm for just our subdivision, and I haven't ran, have run some numbers a long time ago, it's. We are, we are close if we are only taking into account our subdivision and a hundred-year storm. We, we actually, I want to say it's between, around seventy-five-year storm. We, we get close, but we're also providing detention for a, a makeshift detention pond that there were no calculations done for, it was a Band-Aid. Those are, those are not my assumptions, that was told to me by the city and former city engineer, that, uh, it was just built, there's no engineering to it, just, they were trying to Band-Aid it and fix a problem. But if we could remove that volume and the neighbors' volume, that normally you only have to take care of your own storm water.
So let me ask you an unfair question. Why are you being, why is the developer being asked to take care of other, like, parcels?
I would assume it's the path of least resistance. They would like us to, to keep from making waves, be good neighbors, which we have attempted to do. Uh, I, I think our neighbors disagree with that, um, but we really feel like we've bent over backwards to accommodate them every step of the way in, in any way we can, and at the same time preserve our property rights as owners of property, as owners of Hates Creek irrigation water rights and ability to do it.
Thank you.
My understanding is the ten-year storm is essentially the minimum required by code. Is that correct?
Yeah, from our ordinances, um, the ten-year storm requirement is, comes from Kaysville City Code.
So, I, I mean, in my opinion, the, the ten-year storm might apply generally, but, uh, and, and as a citywide code, might be the right number, but in other instances such as this one, we might want to go higher than ten. I'm not saying a hundred is the right one, I'm not saying ten is the right one, and I don't know that we can answer that question today. Well, if it's a, I mean, I don't agree with that. If it's a PRUD, we, and there's a, there are mitigating, there are, there are circumstances with this PRUD, which this is, that mandate more requirements, we can do that.
I'd like to think we could do.
I, I want to be done here, you know, at this process. I don't want to go back to the district court, so I think it's important for me to take thirty seconds just to clear up the record from our vantage point. One is that, under Kaysville Code nineteen-six-nine, um, that drainage and drainage structures shall be required where necessary in the opinion of the city council after recommendations by the city engineer, which is what happened here. You can have a variance from a ten-year requirement when there's a problem, a property that has problems, which was discussed at the very beginning, and that's why we're here, because of the water drainage problems. So you, it, there was a recommendation that there be a hundred-year storm event. The plan that's proposed by our clients.
So.
Does take care of that?
You heard the, the description of how the hundred-year thing entered in here? Do you disagree with that? Are, are you saying that, that Kaysville, the Kaysville engineer looked at it and said a hundred years is the right thing?
And, and, and I talked to Andy personally, and he told me that that was the, the requirement, that it satisfy a hundred-year storm event. And that was included in the developer's hydrology report. It said, per discussion with city engineer Andy Thompson, this development requires a hundred-year, to handle a hundred-year storm event. And the other issue is, we can't just narrow it to this property, because also in the code, uh, nineteen-dash-six-dash-three requires adequate disposal of the ten-year frequency storm runoff and from adjacent properties, which is why that's, that's addressed here. So I don't think it was just a typo, uh, in fact, it's always, that was the understanding until this switched, until like, oh, the city code only requires ten, so we're, we're good.
And where did that switch happen?
What?
Where did that switch happen?
That, that happened in discussions after the final plat approval and as we're negotiating to go forward in the action of the district court.
Final plat approval, it, was that, that included a hundred-year?
The final plat approval, this was discussed, but the, the issue was, when we went to final plat approval with the city council, one of my client's big issues were, we weren't, we weren't provided with the hydrology report or the geotech report. It was after the planning commission meeting, we brought this up, we said, look, they're not even giving it to us. We did a grammar request to the city, the city wouldn't provide it, and that was one of the appeals to the district court, like, we've got to have access to this, you know, just as a fundamental due process, to be able to hire our own engineer to do it. We got it the day before the city council meeting, didn't have time to have an engineer retained to review it, and that's when these water issues came up. Final plat approval was granted, we were negotiating and through the district court to see if we could resolve it outside of court, but anyway, post final plat approval, once these, once our engineer reviewed and said, this doesn't satisfy the hundred-year storm event, uh, doesn't even satisfy fifty, that, that, then they said, well, we only require ten. And I was at a meeting here at city, city council, and we're like, well, that's true, but, you know, I don't, I don't know. That, that, they're just, I don't know how it happened, but that's how it happens. And that's, I think, what we need an answer for, and the commission needs to feel comfortable with. Is ten-year enough, or is a hundred-year? And the change, is that just to make, accommodate the developer to make it work? But I'm telling you, the plan we proposed, and how people look at, um, which would give access to the Briggs, which would, uh, give them five lots, would keep the detention basin in lot one, on northern end of lot one, where it is currently, would, would satisfy a hundred-year storm event. There's a way to do it.
Can I just make, are you talking about this?
Yes.
Okay, let me just talk about that. In my opinion, this is what you want on somebody else's property. The, the, the adjacent property owners are saying, this is what works for us, we want you to do that on your property. As a fundamental principle, I don't like that. The fact that the prop, that the Hotel Baron's have not proposed this says to me that they, that this isn't what works for them, they're trying to compromise. Now, I'm, 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 I'm saying from their perspective, this is, you're saying, this is what works best for the neighbors. Well, this isn't what works best for the property owner. So the property owner is trying to do what works best for them and accommodate the neighbors. And so, to, to, in, just, just as a side note, it falls on deaf ears when they, when, when I hear, when I hear you say, uh, this is what works best, and they should do this, this, uh, option. Well, that's not what they're proposing, so we have to go on what they're proposing.
Vice Chair, and I, and I apologize if that's what you're saying, that's what we require. That's not why this is proposed. This is proposed because we did not want to come before the commission and the city council saying, we don't want this development. They're fine with the development, they want it developed. This is very similar to a pro, proposal that was initially proposed by the developer. And we are just saying, there is a way to do this, to satisfy the commission's requirements, to satisfy the city code, to satisfy the city council, and do this responsibly to protect our clients' properties. They're not saying, this is how someone else has to do it, they're saying, it can't be done in a way that impacts our property and, and increases the risk of flooding. That has already occurred at, at the property and is by, this, their engineer is likely to happen again.
Okay, thank you. This breaks.
I just want to give you a little information, um, you know, this is not a flat piece of property. I don't know if you've seen the top, topography of it.
Yeah.
We've lived there fifteen years. Dan, the water master from Hates Creek, told us that he found groundwater everywhere he put a plat. So while I appreciate, uh, Mr. Larson's fifteen minutes of time, I hope somebody will really consider the truth, and not just what you're being told.
Well, we can go on, or whatever the reports that we get.
I, I mean, I have plenty of video and footage, I can show you the floods over the last fifteen years. They happened.
All right, thank you. I have a question for the city attorney. So unfortunately, I don't have the development code, but the city's code, the city's code requires addressing a ten-year storm?
That's correct. Nineteen-dash-six-dash-three, I've been looking this up, requires a ten-year storm.
Is there any, um, is there any kind of an exception or an ability to go beyond that in the code?
I, I don't.
Or it's nineteen-sixty-nineteen, I think it was, that's where, if there, I can't really find it, but.
Well, it was something, if there was, if there were added need, yeah, if they were out of need, they could increase that.
Give me one moment.
Counsel, is that, is that what you said? Was it nineteen? Nine, okay.
While they're looking that up, I want to go back to Matt's point, which, where he said that he understands what the city engineer and what the third-party engineer that the city engaged have said, but we don't have that report. And Matt's indication is he would like to see that report. How do the rest of you feel on the commission?
Well, if, if we have to enter in a conclusion of law that says the, the requirements of the preliminary plat have been met, and number two is one of those requirements, and we have one engineer on one side saying, what's proposed works, we have another engineer on the other side saying, what's proposed doesn't work, we need to see, I think we have, in order for us to find number two and approve number two, we have to have the city's consulting engineer, who is, who, who is, is hired by the city, who has their own professional standards, who has their own, uh, in, insurance that covers malpractice, offer an opinion as to the sufficiency or insufficiency of number two. And if they say, yes, it's sufficient, then I think we, we have our answer.
And I, and I, of course, I said that earlier, I agree, but I also am concerned about this idea that at one point, the final plat approval was submitted with a hundred-year protection requirement, and then it just evaporated somehow. So for me, it addressed those two issues, and I think two could be covered. Let's let the other attorney go first, unless you've got something.
I have to correct that, it was nineteen-dash-six-dash-three-sub-nine.
Three-sub-nine.
Yeah, so it's not, yeah.
Awesome, thanks.
And I just want to make sure of that, it was never a condition that we. And I just want to make sure that it was never a condition that we had a 100-year storm.
But they're saying that Andy said that.
It was, I'm going to say this, that might have been discussed, but I'm saying that when it was submitted, I'm requiring a final approval previously, there was not a having a 100-year storm. That was not admitted. Sorry, again. It was just, the discussion were required. I'm saying, the 100-year, I, I, there was a discussion regarding 100-year storm, but it was never a condition, the commission never said, or the planning commission never said, "As being a part of who's needing a final plat approval, you must have a 100-year storm." It was never a condition. Does that make sense?
Thank you. So, 19-6-3-sub-9 addresses street drainage. It says, "Street drainage and drainage structures shall be required where necessary in the opinion of the city council after recommendation by the city engineer." I believe those drainage structures are addressed in the final plat. As far as stormwater is concerned, stormwater is addressed in 19-6-3, sub B and C, which says that the developers are required to make sufficient improvements, storm drains, et cetera, et cetera, to adequately dispose of a 10-year frequency storm runoff within the subdivision and from adjacent properties. And then C says, again, a .20 cubic feet per second per acre per 10-year frequency rainfall event. Has to be addressed.
So, it pretty much just addresses the 10-year?
Correct. Stormwater. Street drainage is addressed in that other section, which I believe there are drainage concerns addressed on the plat, as far as, you know, whatever culvert in the side of the gutter, or whatever they, they need there. But as far as stormwater concerns, that's 10 years, and I don't believe that this code has changed in the time that I've been here.
So, what's the difference between street water and storm water? Is that different water? I mean, obviously, there's a difference, but here, are we talking about only storm water in this hydrology 100-year problem?
So, it's all storm water, and maybe some engineers will correct me, but it's specifically the stormwater generated onto the street, and where it's, essentially where it's running off to is its sheet flows throughout the development. So, and it's, it's street drainage, what's it going to take to get the water appropriately out of the street so it's not flooding and pooling and causing traffic or other problems?
Right. I can just be so bold as an attorney. I think what really the issue boils down to is that we have, for item number two, we've got a representation to us that the city engineer and the consulting engineer that was retained by the city as an independent have said, that may feel like that the proposal meets the city's requirement of 10-year storm rain, 10-year stormwater. Another engineer here said that he feels like it does not. And that is indicated that he would like to see the report from the city engineer and the city consultant. And I'm thinking that's where we're at.
And I, and I just have one other thing. The thing that's confusing to me is that we have representations that Andy said he wants 100-year, and that was a recommendation, or that was, that was a condition, or that was what the engineer said we should do. And then later, we have Andy, apparently, approving this 10-year plan.
Oh, I see, during the, during the-
Well, at some point, I mean, you just said that, that our outside consultant and our inside engineer, and I'm assuming that's Andy, and I don't, not, you know, it doesn't have to be Andy, whoever it was. The city engineer at one point said 100-year, and then the city engineer later said 10-year. I want to know why. But, but that's maybe part of this whole, maybe this gets answered by the other report.
Feelings for the rest of the commission?
Didn't you say something about 75 years? You could do 75 years or something?
The question was asked, "How much water could we retain?" And I don't know the exact answer, but we can hold a lot more than the 10-year storm if we only take care of our own water. We're taking care of a lot of other people's water with this because we've been asked to, not because the city code requires it. City code only requires our water for the 10-year. If we were only dealing with our own water, we would be retaining much more than the 10-year.
So, how high could you go, taking care of everything?
We, we can't go any higher.
No higher than?
No, well, and that, not without significant changes, and we don't feel like it's our responsibility to do, take care of other people's responsibilities. Everybody says they're, this developer is irresponsible. Well, no, we're being very responsible and taking care of all of our stuff, plus some of theirs, and we expect our neighbors to be responsible too, and take care of their stuff too, and not flood us out and not give us privacy problems. We, we feel the same way.
But, but the code, the code said, yeah, the code says, "We should include adjacent water." I'm not sure why that is, but that's what-
We do. We accommodate that, and we, we have to bypass it.
Right, but that's for the 10 years, right?
Yeah.
Yes, and we do accommodate that.
So, you're saying you comply with the 10 years and including the adjacent water responsibilities you're giving.
We do not have to provide detention for adjacent properties. We have to pass it through. We have to be able to accommodate the pass-through and convey it through our property into the city system, which we do. We do it very adequately.
So, can I, can I just maybe start to wrap this up and make a comment? So, if you'll indulge me, and maybe it'll just be for myself, but let me read number two, and then let me make a point. And I'm looking at, by the way, I'm looking at finding of fact, paragraph number 29, because later on, well, it might actually, no, no, yeah, I'm looking at finding of fact, paragraph 29, okay?
Is this the draft, the, in the draft of this report, or is this from the-
In the report, in our staff report.
Okay.
It says, "We have found that the final plat application was accompanied with a geotechnical and engineering plan addressing and mitigating the stormwater issues to the satisfaction of the planning commission, and," this is the point I want to make, "and while acknowledging that there may be more than one engineered system capable of protecting residents during stormwater events, finding that the proposed system is an improvement on the previous open lot drainage area." So, on that last point, if, if you on the commission are inclined to approve this, that language, I think, gives you the leeway to say, "Look, there's more than one way to, to, to handle the stormwater. The, the way that's been proposed is, as we've been told from, from city, and we've heard the, the property owner's engineers put his stamp of approval on it and his professional license on it. If you, if you're inclined to approve, I think that language in number two gives you room to do that. If you are not inclined to approve it, or you want more information, then we wait and get something more detailed from the city's consulting engineer." That's how I see number two playing out right now.
Comment, any other comments? Matt, you're still inclined to hear from the city and the consulting engineer?
Yes, and the only reason I hesitate is because I think I see the writing on the wall. But it's just concerning to me that we have this major issue and we're kind of flying blind. I think the way Josh encapsulated it there was spot-on. I think we can, we can decide that it's adequately addressed because of what we've seen, but I'm just not quite there yet.
Yeah, I'm inclined to agree with that as well. Other commissioners? Where you at? We ready to have a motion? Or a course of action?
So, we are, this is for final?
Final plat.
That's where we were.
Approve the final plat.
That's where I thought we might be headed.
That was the motion that was just formulating in my mind.
Yeah, that's, that's where I thought we might be headed, is to do just that very thing. And it seems to me like that that might be a reasonable approach to get that information. And I think to have the engineers here to be able to address any questions that the commission may have with regard to that, so that would lead me to conclude that we would table this.
Do you want me to move? Make a motion?
That's your pleasure, commissioners, whatever you would-
Are you ready for a motion down there? Are you quiet people?
Okay.
I move that we table the Whisper Hollow subdivision final plat approval pending the availability of the city's engineer and the city's outside engineers' report and conclusion with respect to the whether the stormwater issues have been adequately addressed, including that question about 100-year and what happened to, and why it got converted to the 10-year.
Is there a second? There's a second from Commissioner Tran. Is there discussion to the motion?
I have just one question for the city attorney. The question was raised by someone who may comment here, who basically might wind up having juggling opinions from competent professionals. My understanding is, is that the standard that a body like this reaches is that there's a ponderance, not a ponderance, I'm sorry, that is, what's the standard?
I could have told you before you asked.
Yeah. Ponderance is a little higher.
It's, I remember the phrase, "It's beyond the-"
Substantial evidence.
Yes, thank you.
Substantial evidence. What that means, what I understand that to mean is that, that if there are conflicting opinions, or that there's, there's evidence that's kind of presented in different directions, the planning commission and whatever approving body there is can decide based on the evidence that they feel like is the most remain inadequate, that because then they have something to, to least base their opinion or their decision.
I would agree with that. I think that the, and I'm not speaking for this development necessarily, but the development doesn't have to be engineered to the perfect standards, but if, if the planning commission has substantial evidence to support its decision, that decision should be upheld. And, and, you know, it's frequent that experts in fields might disagree on, on things, and that's one of the reasons that the city has a planning commission, is to make, to evaluate that evidence and to make those decisions.
True.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Any, any other comments, any other discussion? All right, let's do our roll call vote. Matt, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. The issue is tabled. And while I'm assuming that this will be back on, on our next agenda?
Yeah, so we will work with our engineering staff to get the details that have been requested. I don't see any reason why that wouldn't be ready to come back before the planning commission. It's September the 26th would be the date of that meeting, right here.
And I would say, let's not lock ourselves into September 26th if we need to get more information from CRS, or Andy, or whoever.
So, when, when the information is available and adequate, ready to be, sorry. If that's the next meeting, that's great.
So, just to make sure I heard correctly, so if the information is not ready yet, it would be at a prior meeting, just as soon as it is available?
Yeah.
I believe it would be the 26th, but if not, we'll, we'll not come back until we have the information that you've requested.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, where, does anyone need a break? Would you like a two-minute break? Let's take a, just a quick two-minute break, give you a chance to stand up, and then we'll take on our, our final item for the year.[1512.13] then we'll take on our, our final item for the year. All right, I don't have a gavel, so I otherwise would be pounding it. But let's, let's get back together and continue on with our-